Becky?
Yeah.
Very good. Joe, if you want to hit your mic. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 a.m. I will call the Monday, July 28, 2025 meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Couple of reminders, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. We will be following the Open Meeting Act with amendments, which is posted on the wall next to the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act. Our first order of business today is to open with prayer. Commissioner Wiems is not with us today, so I will do the honors. If you would all join me, please. Gracious God, we give thanks for your provision of rain that nourishes our land and our spirit. We lift up those affected by our recent wind and hailstorms. May they find safety and peace in your care as they recover. Bless our first responders, military, all who serve our county. We are grateful for their sacrifice and their commitments and conviction for protecting us. We ask for your guidance for this board, wisdom in all our decisions and considerations today. Let us not forget those with less. Let us lead with humility for the well-being of our neighbors and our county. May this meeting be respectful, productive, and pleasing in your sight. In Jesus's name, we ask these things. Amen. Next, if you've all had time to review the minutes from last week's meeting, I would seek a motion for approval.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of the meeting held July 21, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Brunz?
Abstain.
Woodruff?
Abstain.
It does not pass unless...
We don't have a meeting. The minutes aren't approved according to county attorney, whether you were here or not.
So what Tyler advised us last week, even though Joe and I were gone from the meeting the week before, we reviewed the minutes and we made motions and we voted to approve them. Because if we don't approve them, we can't have a meeting today.
Okay, so what do we do?
So we voted last week to approve the minutes.
I think he means, what do we do now since we have a vote?
Oh, I think...
We make a motion to lay it back on the table.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to lay the minutes of the 2025-July 21 meeting back on the table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Brunz?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
So now, we need a motion to approve.
That's unusual. I'd make a motion. We approve the minutes of the meeting held July 21, 2025.
I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I did watch the meeting via our live stream, so...
Very good.
I do know that what was said during that meeting is accurately reflected in the minutes.
Very good.
I just was not here.
Any other remarks or discussion? Roll call, please. Hughley? Wulver?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye, with reservations.
Noted. Our next consent agenda item is to consider the claims and treasures receipts.
I'd make a motion. We approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Hughley?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Moving on, we have a special designated liquor permit submitted by Creative Printers LLC for a wedding reception to be held on September 13, 2025, at the farmhouse located at 3102 East State Farm Road, North Platte. Is there anybody here to speak to this application?
No, they have a catering license and they've been here before.
Okay, very good.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we recommend positive affirmation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for a special designated liquor permit submitted by Creative Printers LLC for a wedding reception to be held on September 13, 2025, at the farmhouse located at 3102 East State Farm Road, North Platte.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do have a check here in the amount of $40. My only question is, this is the first one that I have seen for a liquor permit for a reception at the new facility out on East State Farm Road. Is there somebody here that can maybe answer a few questions? Sorry, Judy, I hate putting you on the spot like this, but do they...
I don't know if I have the answer.
Okay, well, if you don't mind, announce yourself and sign in. I do have a couple of questions, since I have not been out there to visit the location yet.
Judy Clark, Planning Administrator for both the city of North Platte and Lincoln County.
Do they have a controlled area around the facility where, you know, risk...
The facility was allowed to exist through a conditional use permit through the city of North Platte. They did not require fencing.
Okay.
So as far as having a controlled fence around the building, no. But there is a designated area that they lease as part of that, but no as far as a fence around the actual facility.
Normally, when we do these, there's usually a map that's provided of the location and some more detail about that, so...
But it's inside, not outside.
Oh, it's inside the building. They're not doing it outdoor.
It says a diagram if it's outside.
Yeah, they have everything annotated on the indoor area.
It is marked on indoor. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That takes care of that?
Sorry, Judy.
Very good. Thank you. That answers my question.
Where they have a catering license as well, they understand all the ramifications very fully.
Of wristbanding and checking IDs and such as... But they have been before us, Creative Printers. Okay, sounds good.
The Creative Printers LLC has, yes. Yeah. Okay, very good. Are there any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Our next item is adopt adoption of Resolution Number 2025-15, which will update fees for the Lincoln County Planning Commission on the Lincoln County Fee Schedule. Is there somebody that would like to speak to this?
You're up, Judy.
Again.
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. Sorry.
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. The fees for land use permits, all the permits, as to my knowledge, have at least not been updated since 2008. So I thought we should probably just take a little bit of an increase. As you can see, I didn't increase it much. Some of the larger permits, I increased by $50. The smaller permits, like the home occupation, it was $5. So I just thought, you know, it's been since at least 2008, if not before, that maybe we ought to increase them just a titch. So if you think they need to be increased more, that's fine, but that's what I just kind of averaged it out a little bit.
Well, I think we all understand that the cost of doing business has gone up considerably since 2008. So, and all of the increases seem very minimal.
Yeah, and just so you know, not to interrupt, sorry about that. Just so you know, across the state, there was another county that was going to increase fees, and so they did kind of a comparison, and they're all over the place. Hall County is a lot. They're upwards of $1,000 for different permits. Other counties are as little as 50. So we're basically right in the average of all of it.
Judy, one question on Jeffrey Lake. Current is 15, new is no change. Reason why?
Reason why is years and years ago, I would say probably back in about '95, when Jeffrey Lake started doing their own permits, there was a conditional use issued, and I don't know a lot about it because that was before me. I just have the documentation. Jeffrey Lake basically issues their own permits. They just give us notification that a permit was issued, and we keep a file. So $15 to put it in a file and send it to the assessor.
And they do all the other work?
They do all the other work. Yeah.
I think it's important to point out that you don't have a very large staff.
Yes.
And they have regular duties, you know, that are included in their job description. A lot of this stuff is above and beyond, and it does take a lot of time...
Correct.
...to go through and determine, you know, what should be done with these and the process that it goes through. That does take labor hours. And so I think that increasing these fees is probably appropriate to help offset the cost for taxpayers, so.
My only other question. I was unable to make it to the last plant county planning and zoning meeting. These have been ran past them and they approved, or this is their recommendation?
Actually, no. That was just an executive decision.
Very good. Sometimes those have to happen.
Chair, I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-15 to update fees for Lincoln County Planning Commission on the Lincoln County Fee Schedule.
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Woodruff?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, following the Open Meetings Act with amendments, which is posted at the entrance to this room. We will begin by approving the minutes of last week's meeting.
I'd make a motion. We approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held July 21, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Again, I was absent last week, but I did watch the entire meeting via live stream, and everything that I saw in that live stream is accurately reflected in the minutes.
Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Abstain.
Next, we have our certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Our next item are the letters of late filing of homestead exemption applications.
We do have three of those in front of you today. We have the letters in front of you for the reasoning. Two of them are very first-time filers for the first time ever this year.
Julie, sorry. Will you announce yourself and sign in?
Julie Stanger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Thank you, Julie. Good morning.
Good morning. Two of them are very first-time filers. The third one is, has filed before, but she has never been late before. Or he, might be he, I guess, on Marion. I'm not sure what that one is. But they do have, I think, letters attached that explain to you why they were late. Before my office can accept the application to be filed with the Department of Revenue, you have to first approve their letter of reasoning why they were late, and then that gives my office permission to continue with the application process.
And just for historical reference, this is something that we commonly do each year, and normally, we always approve them unless there's something unusual, or it's a repeat situation. And so...
The state statute, they do have until July 20th to present this letter to you as why they were late. So, and they all premet that statute requirement.
And then, any approval that we make just allows or authorizes you to actually go through the process to determine whether or not they qualify.
It doesn't automatically say that they're approved for the homestead exemption. It just allows my office permission to continue the application process.
I think that's a key distinction that needs to be made, so.
Very much so.
Very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that on a homestead exemption application, Form 2025, for Marion Eve Rhinebolt, she is a 92-year-old young lady that has had some illness, and also, her daughter came, I believe from Illinois, if I'm not mistaken, to help her fill out the forms at the last moment. And they put them in the post office at 5:00 on the June 30th. However, the, because of the pickup time, they weren't received until a couple days later, but certainly, every attempt was made. It'd be my motion that we allow the assessor's office to review this homestead exemption appeal request.
I would second that.
Just for the record, I guess, let me, Joe, it's Form 458. I think you read Form 2025, and that's just the year. So it is Form 458.
And thank you for the correction.
No, no problem.
Our copy stamp is right over the top of that online.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Thank you, Julie, for the great explanation. Roll call, please. Hughley?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I have Form 458, Nebraska Homestead Exemption Application, with a letter attached from a Patsy A. Mars. The applicant did file this after the extension, or after the deadline, but is requesting an extension for the review process for the property located at 1221 South Street in Sutherland, Nebraska. Again, keeping with the fact that this is the first time that this applicant has been late in their filing, it would be my motion that we allow the assessor's office to go ahead and do their due diligence and authorize this request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Okay, Chair, I have Form 458 for Nebraska Homestead Exemption Application from my Harold and Rosemary Grandi, 3840 North Front Road, North Platte, Nebraska. They are requesting homestead exemption, late filing. It appears from the letter of explanation, their attached person had filed an extension on their taxes, and then their homestead credit was not filed on time. This was not late last year, so it would be my recommendation that we grant approval for the assessor's office to proceed with filing this homestead exemption for Harold and Rosemary Grandi. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call. Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Our final item for the Board of Equalization is a motor vehicle tax exemption application is submitted by the county treasurer. Good morning, Sherri. Good morning, Sherri.
In my motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the application, Form four fifty-seven, for the North Platte Catholic Schools for a twenty sixteen Dodge Grand Caravan. It's used to transport to and from activities and recommended for approval by Sherri Newton, the Lincoln County Treasurer.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other ed- discussion? I just read the word "education." Hopped right into my brain and out my mouth. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Oh, boy.
It is, it is nine twenty-four. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
I wanted to give Wald his due, just...
Our nine twenty item, which it's now nine twenty-five, was discuss and consider application by Randall and Linda Lobner for Lobner Second Administrative Subdivision on property located at twenty-two-three-six-three-four West Suburban Road in a TA one Transitional Agriculture District on property described as part of the west half of the northeast quarter of Section thirteen Township fourteen north, range thirty-three, west of the six PM in Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. So, what you have in front of you is a copy of my review comments and then the preliminary and final plat for Lobner Second Administrative Subdivision. The subdivision will split an existing agricultural dwelling site from the remaining agricultural property. The dwelling site will be three point oh one acres and the remaining agricultural property would be seventy-six point nine nine acres. Planning staff has no objection to the subdivision. The subdivision is in conformance with the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan and zoning regulations. It's required that they have at least three acres when they split off the, when they split these existing agricultural sites off. So, it is three point oh one. So, it does meet.
Is this, this is right off of an existing county road also, right?
Yes, suburban.
So, there is access.
Yep.
If you all have had time to review the maps and the application paperwork, I would seek a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve and authorize appropriate signatures on an application by Randall and Linda Lobner for Lobner Second Administrative Subdivision on property located at two-three-six-three-four West Suburban Road in a TA one Transitional Agricultural District on property described as part of the west half of the northeast quarter of Section thirteen Township fourteen north, range thirty-three west of the sixth PM in Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
And I forgot to bring the plat for you to sign, so I'll drop it off in Becky's office.
Okay. Our next item is at nine thirty.
Did they, did they make a little squeeze up on the front of the road?
Yeah. Thought I saw somebody out there spraying too, so...
Came by, picked up a worship in Seneca this weekend and came by the area by Mr. Weems. Looks like they had a little hell at that way.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
We were very fortunate south of town. We had a lot of good rain in a short period of time, but no hell or high wind.
And I guess it did yell south of Hershey, didn't it? So, it just kind of stopped between you guys.
That must have been my one. I think they got hell that night, south and north of Brady also. It went through there in a pretty, pretty strong...
Strong.
Yeah. I think it did damage not just to crops, but also to homes.
Yeah, I drove through that, that line. It was not fun.
It is nine thirty. Our agenda item is a presentation by Region Two Human Services.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies. If you would like to sign in and then announce yourself for the record and turn on both of the mics there, please.
I'm going to hand out some of these here for you. And maybe I'll just put them at the end of the table.
And they can just take them.
There's some notebooks. We'll just put whatever out and if you want to take them, whatever it is, extra they may have. And then Tina has special baked goods for everybody.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, boy.
Could you like get on our schedule at least once a month?
You know, my mama loves to cook, so...
That's awesome.
Yes, yes. And I've tested them, you know, to make sure they were good, so you're all right.
That's a very necessary step.
It's very important, isn't it?
Very necessary step.
Save your energy for a little bit.
Thank you.
It looks like there's probably enough we can share.
Maybe some more hidden in that bag, too.
Yeah, you know.
I know, I see familiar faces, so I know that we reported our annual report last year. I was here with Katie last year with Behavior Health. But my name is Kylie Joyce, and I am just with Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities, section of Region Two Services. And so, that is what I'm going to talk about, and Tina Gaston, I'm lucky to have her join me. She is the administrator at the Opportunity Center in North Platte in Oba-Walrus. So, she's going to actually do the bulk of the talking and sharing. But I just want to go over what I promised the governing board I would go over with the numbers of Lincoln County individuals that are originally from Lincoln County that are receiving services. So, turn this on. Okay, so currently, from Lincoln County, and this is county of origin, there are fifty-two individuals in services from Lincoln County. That is not the only individuals in services. That is just folks that are originally from here. Forty-eight of those individuals are receiving services with Tina's group at North Platte Opportunity Center. And then we have four individuals that are receiving those services in our COZAD program, which is South Central Developmental Services. The governing board had asked me to tell you what the cost of services would be if we were not utilizing state and federal waiver dollars to help cover those services. And the cost of services is determined by needs for the individuals. That's an assessment that's done to say that they need to have continuous services or they can have their needs met with a drop-in services. So, the folks, those fifty-two individuals that I was sharing about, it costs about five point eight million dollars to provide for their needs for a year. And so, that is that twenty-four-hour service for some of those, the drop-in service. It's a day service or residential service, supported employment service at times, so they can work out on the community. North Platte has a very strong supported employment program, so they have several folks in the North Platte community and surrounding areas that do have jobs and have job coaches as well. I wanted to touch on the revenues that come in and the expenses. So, the expenses, I just wanted to show that the majority of the funds that come in for the programs go right back out into wages for the direct support staff and the supervisors that support those individuals in their care and into staff benefits. Eighty-three percent of the budget we get in goes back out to staff supports, staff wages, benefits, that type of thing. And those go back into the communities, communities in which they are in. So, Lincoln County and the surrounding communities as well. Talking specifically about Lincoln County funds for this last fiscal year, it was seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. And I just want to say that those funds are greatly appreciated. We are a nonprofit entity that operates to serve the people. We were created seventy-some years ago by parents and community members that wanted something better for their folks that were needing services. And so, they were kind of ahead of the curve in the state of Nebraska, and we just appreciate anything that lets us do that job that we were tasked with many, many years ago for parents and families. So, I, that's kind of briefly what I wanted to share with you on my part. I really want Tina to talk about the services that they offer and what they're doing in your community. Any questions for me before I pass that on to Tina? All right.
All right, thank you for your time this morning. I am glad to be here. And so, as Kylie said, I want to really talk about our support of employment. We do have one of the most successful programs. We have twenty, actually, two people that are working in the community at competitive wage jobs. As a matter of fact, we have two people that are earning more than I can pay our staff. One of them works for Walmart and has been there ten years. We have one that's worked for Dairy Queen. He's been there eight years. We have McDonald's, who has employed three people in the last year. One of them specifically is my son, which makes it very wonderful. Not that all the rest of the seventy-nine that we serve are not, because they are. What is amazing about that is, you know, people will look at the people we serve and think there's, they lack ability or they're, you know, they're just not, they can't serve or work like everyone else. That's not true. We believe in them, and that's what we do every day as we come to work. We believe they live their best life. We believe they can learn and grow. So, they, the other places, there's, you'll see on the sheet, but Acres Employees, you'll get that. It's coming around. There's only two of them. I think Becky has one. Mr. Woodruff has one. But there are several places, so I wish you would make sure that you note that and make sure and honor them as much as you can. We do, because we appreciate their time and their dedication to people that we serve with developmental disabilities. And so, the other piece that we do is, I want to just talk really about one young lady who came to us when she was nineteen. Today, she's twenty-two, and she is, actually, I think she's twenty-three. But she is just getting, so she came to us, she was, had come through the foster care system. I don't have to say much more about that. And I can tell you that we've loved her and helped her grow. She has a driver's license today. She also is getting ready to move into an apartment. So, she came into our residential. She was really kind of, almost needed one step after herself. And today, she's going to move out and live on her own. And yes, we're going to provide services. And yes, we're going to support her at Dunham's, where she's worked since it opened. And yes, she's going to come to our day site, but look at her grow. And that's because of the services and the money that you gave us, that my staff, our staff, my staff, support these people to do. We have another gentleman that moved, his mom and, his mother and father passed away within six months of each other during COVID. He had never lived anywhere but besides in that, in that home, hadn't had services. He moved directly into our home, which is several hundred miles from his home. And guess what? Two and a half years later, he is now living, he just moved two months ago on his own. He is living in an apartment, and he desired that, and he is so much happier. Because, you know, if they don't need twenty-four seven, you wouldn't want that either. And so, that, I believe that speaks volumes of what we do. I can also, I also want to touch base on, we are part of Special Olympics. Matter of fact, we, most of the coaches come from my agency. I say "my" every time, NPOC. And then we have Action Club, which I don't know how many of you know about the Kiwanis or are part of them. But we have a subsidiary, anyway, another part of it, which is for the developmental disabilities community. Actually, the board is made up of all the people with developmental disabilities. We actually have one young lady, remind me, she is the...
The governor.
The governor of Nebraska and went and has represented us. And that's the young lady that's learned to drive and moving into her apartment. And so, with the Action Club, we do trash walks, we go to nursing homes, and we bring goodies, we sing carols, we make cards. We just give back to the community in all, I could go on and on about what they do. They help with the pancake feeds, but they give back. They also, we do four days a week, we do at least two routes and sometimes three of Meals on Wheels. We, that's what they do. That's another giving back at what we do. We also, in October, had a huge trunk retreat with games. Hundreds of people from the community come. And not only did they have a blast, but so did us, so did we. We're already talking about what that looks like here soon. And then I don't know how many of you know, but then in June of two thousand twenty-four, a massive tree fell on our building. We did not skip a beat. It fell on a Saturday, and on a Monday, we provided services. We didn't stop because we know that the people we serve deserve it, need it, and some guardians and families count on us to provide that service. But today, we are still working with about a third of our building. We're looking at about next year this time to have it built. It's a one point two million dollar building. Do we have that money? We don't. Insurance is going to provide about a third of it for us. We are praying that FEMA and NEMA, which it was declared a disaster, will provide some. And then we're going to have to get a loan, and we're going to have to ask for, for money. And so, I just wanted you to know that that's something we're looking at. But the building is going to be beautiful, and it's going to serve our people for hundreds of years, I hope. And so, I just thank you for the money. You're the only one we're going to get a raise from this year. I don't know if you're... But your one percent is the only thing we're going to see. And so, my staff aren't going to get a raise because we can't afford it. And so, you just have to know the people that I have in our agency, they're there because they love the people and not because of the money. And that's just all there is to it. And yes, we are the first DD-established agency in Nebraska. We've been here since nineteen fifty-five, and we continue on for another hundred or two years.
Tina, thank you for sharing that. We should be the ones thanking you, not you thanking us.
I love it.
I love hearing the success stories because I think most of us have experience and know of the hardships that your clients deal with. And so, the service that you provide, coming alongside them and helping them, is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I would echo Commissioner Woller's thoughts. The organization is well-loved in our community. I think I can say that very, very boldly. The community loves you. I know that I thoroughly admire you and your staff and all the work that you do. Everyone deserves to live their life in the fullest way possible, and you help provide that with the services that you offer, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, in the past, you've, when they had the pallets eight or ten years ago.
Ten years ago, yeah.
You've always had the print shop forever and stuff. Share with us a little bit what you're kind of doing now in the building.
Yeah, so at the, at the site where we used to do the pallets, which was ten years ago, I've been here nine and I, well, and I changed about the time I got there. But today, we just do small wood projects. I say "just," but they just create whatever. They'll do framework. They are redoing furniture. You know, we pick stuff up. People donate things, bring them by and say, "Hey." And so, we're learning to refinish, learning to paint. Lot of the items that we do, though, they go back to the homes, to the people that are like, "Can I have that piece?" You know, "I need that in my room or in my house." You know, how awesome is it that they do that and they get to bring it home and say, "I did that." But they create all sorts of small things. I don't know that I would even be able to name it all, but it's amazing. So, that's what we did. We put small tools in and machines, and that's what they're doing there. But the front of it is a sensory site. That would be the most successful place that we have. We put about fifteen thousand dollars into the front, remodeling it and then buying sensory items. So, sensory means we have things over our lights, so they're not, they're not bright. They're not intrusive. It is a very calm environment. All the things that they do, they manipulate things. They, they're learning and growing. I mean, they're learning how to pair socks, how to fold towels. Actually, we have one gentleman that's one-on-one. You would have never thought that he even knew how to spell or write. And today, you ask him, "What is that?" And he will write it on a whiteboard, up to five letters of a word. So, we're, what are we doing there? We're growing them, but in a calm environment. Those people with autism... We're growing them, but in a calm environment. Those people with autism that are fairly severe, this, the one young lady, the reason that we kind of started it, she picks things up and puts them in her mouth. This place, and she would run. I mean, she'd just run around, honestly, throwing glasses and dumping water. That doesn't happen anymore. She's up in this, in sensory site. And to tell you the truth, it's beautiful. And so that's what, what we're doing there. But I, I do want to say about the copy shop, if I can talk. So our copy center, we developed from the copy shop, which was, you know, some business cards to a full-fledged business. It's a copy center. Matter of fact, we've been nominated by the Telegraph, the region of the Telegraph, as the best copy center in the region three years in a row. And we are nominated in the top five again. And so we, that's where they actually get paid. We have five or six people that, with developmental disabilities, they get paid for do the work that they do. But we provide the, the community with all sorts of, I mean, you'll see, you see there just simply what's created.
Yeah, on your books, your notebooks, those are stickers from the copy center that they did.
But, yeah, we do notebooks too. I mean, we do, I, I couldn't even, the banners, we, everything, I'm telling you. And I'm so proud of that. And they're proud of it. I mean, how awesome it is. Customers come in and acknowledge their work, you know? And so they come in and, I've had somebody donate a hundred dollars the other day. They're so excited. You know what we're doing with it? They're going to have pizza two or three times, or whatever they want, whether it's pizza or not. You know, it's not that we just take that. But anyway, that's what we're doing. We're giving back to that and, and really
I can tell you that for over thirty years, I use them to do all of my specifications. Did a tremendous job. Unfortunately, unfortunately, things are digital now. So most people, I just, you know, they get a disk or something. But what, what a wonderful service you did for the community. Continue to do it. I just want to say thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Very, very grateful for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Yeah, don't, don't sit back down. I have questions.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I just didn't want to take any money.
Oh, no. This is, this is a great use of our time today. Did you say you have seventy-nine clients?
Yeah, or seventy-nine to eighty now. Yeah, we're just, we have another new one coming, I think, next week. They're supposed to be speaking with us this week, so.
And so you frequently take your clients on field trips?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. So tell me about some of the field trips.
All right. So, I mean, honestly, we're going to the lake today. They go out to Lake Mack. I, I, did I talk about us expanding to Ogallala? We did as of January. So anyway, we go out to McConaughey and, or in Ogallala. And they, I mean, they spend all day there. So we take our grills and they go out and do that. But we also do, I mean, like, we went to a Husker game. We took forty-seven people to a Husker game, many of them for the first time. We went, we go up to Apple Orchard and, and pick apples. Well, this year, we're going to go to Branson. And then for Branson, we're going to go to Arkansas. There is a, some stuff up there they want to do. So we'll take about, oh, twelve, I think, to fifteen people to Branson. We're also going to Denver. We'll go to Denver for two nights, maybe three. And they'll do the aquarium. And I think there's a Titanic museum, anything they can experience that they haven't. You know what their favorite thing is, though? Being in a motel, in a swimming pool, and eating pizza. If you don't do that, you ain't went. You gotta do it. It doesn't matter how many days you're gone, maybe even twice. So, but honestly, what we did learn is they don't care about going to a fancy restaurant. They just don't. We tried that once. And honestly, that experience was really not good for them. So we, we just do whatever they want. Taco Bell? Oh, yeah, guaranteed it's on our trip. But anyway, we went to South Dakota so many times, probably three times since I've been here. We, well, we went to Salt Dogs, did that. We do hockey and monster trucks. And honestly, anything people want to do. We went to Disney World. Oh, my goodness. Their dreams and hopes are what we do. We, we, we meet with them. What do they want to do? What's their hopes and dreams? We have them. Why don't they get to do them? And they do.
And Tina, a lot of those activities probably happen through generous donations from people in the community.
It's the only way they happen.
Only way they happen. So I felt it was important
Thank you.
To bring that up.
And the purchase of homes, we, since I've been here, we purchased three homes. We have eight residential homes now. And I can tell you that the only reason we are able to do that is because we have had several people donate.
Very good.
Thank you.
And Kylie, do you mind talking a little bit more about Region Two?
Okay.
And, because I'm interested to learn some of the challenges.
Before we get into Kylie, would you just say one thing?
Okay, absolutely.
They had mentioned being up in Ogallala. Now, there's more to that story than meets the eye. And thanks to Tina, Ogallala has a program that works now, that probably wouldn't be the case had it not been for this young lady. So just wanted to give kudos where they're deserved.
Well, you can tell that Tina is all in on the job that she does. And it's so gratifying, I can tell.
Yeah. I get up every day. Excited to get to work.
No, you're fine.
And I, I would echo that. We're very fortunate to have Tina as an administrator and for her to see that growth in Ogallala. I think since we started there in January, it's doubled inside.
Tripled.
Maybe not tripled. So I think from three or
Yeah, it's a nine.
Three to nine individuals are serving. And community-based things, going to the lake, working, those type of things. So Region Two Services, we have three agencies that operate underneath us. The agency in Cozad, and then the Opportunity Center for Ogallala and North Platte. And then we have an agency in McCook as well. And we face the same challenges that a lot of agencies are right now with the state and federal climate that's happening and how we're going to mitigate that going forward. And I guess our philosophy is just we're going to make a way to make it happen. And so we have dedicated staff that work for us and work for the individuals that we serve. And I know it's a little scary right now, but we are just bracing for whatever is to come and try to weather that the best we can. And I know that's across the board, not just for our program, but behavioral health is having the same concerns as well as aging. So we just try to keep the focus on the people and, and do what we need to for them. So I don't know what other specific questions you have, but I'm happy to
I, I just know of a lot of the work that you do in the community and knew that you had some pretty significant challenges providing those services. So I thought it was worth you taking a minute to address some of that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody have any other questions? Or ladies, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, I love hearing the success stories.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Our next agenda item is at ten. I am going to take this opportunity to move some things that are normally at the end of our day up a little bit. So hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. Do we have any elected officials that would like to address anything with us? Department heads? Becky, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Tyler, no need for a closed session today? That wasn't really a question. Very good. Nothing, nothing urgent. Very good. We will, we will make sure that that happens next week. So committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
We'll have one for next week.
Okay. We, we do have a few minutes. We did have our Marvin Planning Open House was held on Thursday, two different sessions. It was good for us to get together with Judy Clark. Judy, I think I've put you on the spotlight a few times today. Lots of good progress happening with our comp plan. It's been a long and arduous process. It is a draft. I anticipate after our community meetings, we had a great turnout. I think maybe a hundred people total between the two sessions. Some good questions, good opportunity to talk one-on-one with a couple of commissioners, with planning and zoning, and with Keith Marvin and his team from Marvin Planning. Again, it didn't happen on the schedule that we initially set out, but good thorough work sometimes takes a, a little longer than we anticipated.
I was wondering if we had many written comments out when they reviewed, or if any, Judy, do you mind if she just?
Judy Clark, Planning and Zoning Administrator. I, we did receive a few. Kevin Krieger's in the process of scanning those and emailing them to the, to, to the consultant. So we do have a few of, a few comments. But there wasn't, for the hundred people, I would say maybe we got ten, fifteen written comments. But there was a lot of discussion. And I do have some, those posters that were displayed. So if you guys can think of a place that if we want to display those, I do have those in my vehicle. So
Very good.
We can display them.
I may stop by your office today to pick up my copy, my updated copy, because you know I'm going to have a few comments to submit. So I've been taking notes.
Sounds good.
So, Chris, you were there and part of that. Do you have any feedback you'd like to add?
No, I think it was just a really good opportunity. I know that we both spent a lot of time, particularly after the actual presentation that was given during the open house session, speaking with people from all across Lincoln County, answering questions. Lot of interest in, in every chapter that's going to be reviewed. So very excited on the progress that's been made. Looking forward to seeing the zoning regulations as they get prepared and the next steps. Judy, if you could just kind of lay out what next steps look like for anybody that's here or watching, that'd be appreciated.
Yep. So of course, the consultants went back. They're going to take some of those comments and see if they need to be implemented, added, changed, if something needs to be changed. And I do already have kind of a portion of the draft of some of the updated zoning regulations. And I haven't gotten an opportunity to read through those. I just got them in the middle of last week. So I'm going to be looking through that. I'll probably forward those on to the committee to see if the two of you have some suggestions, changes. Doesn't seem like it's going to be a lot different than what we currently have because our zoning regulations seem to work pretty decently right now. So I don't anticipate a lot of changes. Next steps are to finalize the actual draft of the comp plan. Once that's finalized and we get the zoning regulations in place, then we will go into public hearing with the Planning Commission and then, of course, on to here. So they'll have two more opportunities to attend public hearings for both the comp plan and the adoption of the zoning regulations.
It's going to be my request, Judy, that at some point before all of that happens, that we have a work session, maybe just the committee members from the commissioners and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you, our stakeholders that have been involved in the process. Once we all have a chance to go through that very thick, fifteen chapters.
And we can do that. We can do a work session before we do the public hearings. I don't have any problem with that.
I would appreciate that if, if your
Okay, yeah. We can get it set up.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No problem.
I think we're moving, we're moving in a, in a good direction. I do know that I got quite considerable feedback at both sessions, that there was some disappointment, that it, there wasn't more wind and solar conversation. But I think there was some miscommunication or misunderstanding about the intent of the meeting. And I, I would like to thank you and Keith Marvin for helping us address that. But we, I did get plenty of feedback on the topic. And I think it's good that people in the community know that, that, that's just one piece of the work that we are doing.
Yep.
So, thank you very much.
You bet. No problem.
You know, to kind of cheer chill on that, talking about the one piece, I think a lot of people realize what all goes into a comprehensive plan. You know, we don't think about law enforcement or some of those other things that are so important. But I, I think it was an education for a lot of people there. And I thought Keith and his group, Judy, you, everybody, the committee did a great job. So, you know, kudos. I, I think they realized it was more than just, you know, a single source or a single document and how that comp plan is actually used, you know, when it comes to planning and zoning and things that we don't think about using every day on a comp plan. But you're always reflecting back to that, so.
It's definitely your guideline where decisions are made. And it takes a community to build a community, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
We have two minutes before our next agenda item.
So, give me a kick, Pennington, okay? Yeah, mine.
Joe, is that your phone? Heard something coming from that station.
I think that's probably the most common used alarm out there. It is ten o'clock. At this time, we will have our Lincoln County Employee Recognition. We have four employees being recognized today for service. Jerome, did the employee from the Sheriff's Department come over?
I don't see her.
Okay. We have Paula Fitzgerald with five years of service at the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. And Sheriff Kramer has her certificate. And we also give out a Lincoln County challenge coin with the certificate. So Jerome will make sure that happens. We also have Rebecca Brittenham from the Lincoln County Attorney's Office. Rebecca did not join us. I have shared her certificate and coin with Tyler. He will make sure that she gets that. So moving on, we have an employee from our Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Jeff's out there?
I saw him earlier.
We have an award for Jeff Snyder, ten years of service. I mean, he's in already. We look forward to many more. Valued employee, great attitude, and love to have him at the Roads Department.
Thank you.
You're not, you're not going to get off that easy, you guys. George, George wants a picture. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Our next honor is for one of our own, Commissioner Hughley. If you would humor me, please. If there are people out in the hallway that want to join us, please invite them in. We can make room in here. Perfect. Commissioner Hughley, if you would please join me up here, the other commissioners. I'm going to start with, we, we sent out an invitation. You guys, there's room in here if y'all want to step in. We can stand up along the edges of the room. First of all, thank you all for joining us. This is awesome. This is awesome turnout. Joe, we, we invited people in the community and throughout the state that you have worked with over the course of forty years, and so I did invite Governor Pillen, and because of a prior commitment, he's unable to attend, but he did send me a document making you an Admiral in the Great Navy of the State of Nebraska. So, and I, I, I get the impression this isn't Joe's first Admiral. I don't know how many of God gets, but just, I would just like to read a little bit of it. It says, Admiral, the Great Navy of the State of Nebraska and all who shall see these presents, greetings, know ye that reposing special trust and confidence in the patriotism, valor, fidelity, and abilities of Joseph R. Hughley, and knowing you to be a good person and a loyal friend and counselor, I have nominated you, and the governor does appoint you an Admiral in the Great Navy, the Great Navy of the State of Nebraska. You are therefore called to diligently discharge the duties of Admiral by doing and performing all manners of things thereto belonging, and I do strictly charge and require all officers, seamen, tadpoles, and goldfish under your command, and I think I see some of your tadpoles and goldfish sitting in the audience, and you are to observe and follow from time to time such directions as you shall receive according to the rules and discipline of the Great Navy of the State of Nebraska. This commission to continue in force during the period of your good behavior, that might be a struggle, and the pleasure of the Chief Admiral of the great State of Nebraska, and it is signed on the twenty-eighth day of July by Governor Jim Pillen, so. So, Joe, I present forty years of service to the Lincoln County, Nebraska, to Joe Hughley. We really do sincerely appreciate your hard work and efforts year after year. Thank you for the many years of service.
Some of us are just slow learners.
And finally, we have, well, not finally, we have this wonderful young man who is a veteran in Lincoln County, Nebraska, and we commissioned him to make you a special plaque. Forty years of service deserves something a little, a little above and beyond the certificate. So, Joe Hughley, on behalf of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, it's my privilege and honor to recognize you for forty consecutive years as Lincoln County District One Commissioner. Joe, your achievement is historic. In fact, records suggest you are one of, if not the first, Nebraska elected a county official to reach this remarkable status. Every election, you've had a challenger, and every time, you rose to the occasion and rose to the top. That, my friend, is a legacy of resilience and impact. That legacy touches not only Lincoln County, but Nebraska as a whole, and generations of public servants inspired by your path. To Penny and your family, thank you for sharing your patriarch with us and supporting him for four full decades. We know public service is supported by our families first and then all the people that we surround ourselves with. So, Joe, look around the room. You've had a lot of support.
It's hard not to look around the room and just see.
So, finally, Commissioner Hughley, thank you for being the steady hand and the steadfast heart of Lincoln County. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joe, I brought you back a book from the National Association of County Convention that I attended a couple of weeks ago. Ninety years, they have been working for Nebraska counties. There is some really great things in this book, and this is a book put out by NACO. It's called Inside Nebraska Courthouses, and so every, every courthouse in Nebraska is in here, so that is for you. And we are going to end with Sheriff Kramer. Would like to say a few words and present you with something.
I just wanted to add that he's still using the same yard signs that he was.
That, that must be a true, a true conservative.
And I might add, he's right.
We have this plaque made with, from the Sheriff's Office to thank you for your support over the forty years. You've been a good friend, and we have this plaque made for the Sheriff's Office, but really it's all of Lincoln County law enforcement. You have been a friend and a support, and we appreciate you.
Well, I'm speechless. I just want to shake a couple of hands and say, you know, thank you, and I also want to recognize some people, my family, you said it, can't, couldn't have done it without you. Lainey, you're supposed to be out ranching today or branding or doing something. He's there. Tony, thank you. This kid right here in the front, I thought was down in Dallas, Texas wrestling. He was this weekend, I know that, representing the State of Nebraska on a dual team, and thank you, just thank all of you. Former Commissioner Dedrding, Bill Henry, and I see Walt Johnson back there. I served with all of these people. We, we had some good times. I'm going to come back and shake the Senator's hand in a minute, and a public service commissioner, it looks like, back in the corner, maybe. Chiefs over in the corner there, Chief Reeves with Police Department, Chief Thompson. Pretty, pretty awesome moment for me right now. Thank you. You know, some people are slow learners, sort of like the Energizer Bunny, but, you know, one thing about it, I'm not going to have to use those yard signs again, because this will be. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I would like to offer this opportunity for anybody in the audience, if anybody has something they'd like to share with us all, now is the time for that.
I'll try. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Laura. I'm Joe's oldest daughter. Forty years ago means I was ten when he was first sworn in. I came back in January. I told him I was here for the first wedding and I'd be here for the last one. I think that Michaela kind of touched upon it, but I don't think Dad realizes how many people he's inspired. Takes a lot of dedication, a lot of time, a lot of care to do what he's done for one term, let alone four terms. I know I'm inspired by him. I try to be involved and be at where we live because of Dad. I try to be a good person. I try to give back, and that came from him. So, thanks. We're really, really proud of you.
Gary Pearson, President of North Platte area Chamber Development Corporation. Would like to thank Joe for four decades of service to make our organization what it is and to help facilitate economic development throughout Lincoln County, and really appreciate his dedication, his insight, his knowledge, and we further plan to honor you at our, our annual meeting on October first, so.
I know I have to say about Gary. Gary was at Sydney, and I'm, I'm not very good, maybe the first time at doing something, but I am persistent. After three tries, we finally got Gary to see the light and come out to North Platte. Thank you, Gary.
Todd. I'm Todd Cannon from The Telegraph. As some of you know, I'm trying to set the state record for brain draining back and forth from, from Western grab. I meant three times in, since starting college forty, some forty years ago, and hoping that this will be the last time. But the first time I came out here, right after graduation, I got assigned by Kate Blackledge and Joe Clapham to cover the Lincoln County Government, and the first meeting I came in here, somebody was starting his second full year on the board with a lot more hair in that regard. And so, I've had the opportunity through all three different stints I've had at The Telegraph, late eighties, mid nineties, and since, to occasionally cover this place and see what this guy has been up to. I also might add that I've come full circle a little bit in that the very first time I ever got involved in planning and zoning coverage was covering the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan in nineteen eighty-seven. And that, that plan initially was led by Roarick Palmer, whose dad, Roger, long occupied that seat over there while Don Hawes occupied the seat next to Joe. And so, when I came back, I think the first thing, I, when I first got to come in here, I think I asked Joe about, what was, what about that budget matter I asked you back in ninety-five? Didn't you get that? One other thing that I point out from my time, you know, I had the opportunity to watch county government in this state through various stops, including the Scottsdale Star Herald, who I also covered county government, and the Omaha World Herald, and there's a lot of things that are the same anywhere in culture, anywhere you go in this state. And one thing I've always appreciated about county government as opposed to the other kinds of local government is, in some ways, it's the most informal, the easiest to talk, to talk to people about, and I've always loved that about this, this forum. Secondly, it, it is very much the government of the land and the people involved in the land, and the, the board at the time I was there, we had two ag producers in Don and Roger, and then we had Joe representing this, basically North Platte City, and that's always been the case, and now there's more people, but everybody brings their expertise to what they know in their life, and this is, you know, county government is rural, the rural area's main government. They have to have that kind of voice there, and the people, the various ag producers who have been in these seats over all these years have certainly done that to the best of their degree. But you also need to have the people who understand the, the world of legalities and contracts and, and such that also makes it the other part of county government, and many of our, many of our producers, they've done the very best they can. They've learned a great deal about it as they've been there, but Joe has always brought that kind of professionalism, that kind of knowledge, and made, and for forty years has made sure that it's always been there to rely upon, and I think that's been one of his greatest, greatest accomplishments for that. He's got a lot more people now that can also share that bird, that have that knowledge and can share that burden and can take over when he decides to finally step down. And Joe, you got to get Allen Sea-Tac in Valley County out of the way so he can actually be the number one guy. I don't know what it's going to take, but maybe he'll decide to step down before you do and you can get that, that last honor before you call it off. It's been an honor to have you a lot over the years.
Very good. Senator?
Well, thank you. I, I just make a couple of comments. I've known Joe since I first moved to North Platte thirty-seven years ago. If ever there's a time for seniority, or I should say tenure, if this board is part of it, you know, the, the knowledge that you pick up along the way is invaluable. I know you use NACO a lot. I've got a good relationship with Don Cannon in the legislature, but it really comes down to my own commissioners taking the time to come to Lincoln, which you guys have done. I know you three in the middle in particular do know how to find me, express your opinions, and thank, I thank you for that, but I always like to figure out where truth is, and as you know, there's been a lot of things happening in the legislature to cut expenses and push down spending at the local level, and I always find that if I talk to local council members on the city council, when I talk to local commissioners, you can find out, but if we do this, we have this problem, and if we do this, we have this problem, and let's make sure we understand, we don't break this. And so, that information is really good, and I think, Joe, the, you've imparted a lot of wisdom with, through your, to your colleagues over the years, and I know they've, they're listening and they've heard you, and so you've done a great service there. I'd also tell you that the coordination between the city and the county, kind of starting back with Devco, when the prison project, that seems like forever ago, we didn't get, and I think we're glad we didn't, but we did a lot of work organizing ourselves, and then we ended up with a distribution center, which was a big win for North Platte, and now more recently Sustainable Bee. And that happened because of great coordination, coordination with the city, the county. Hopefully, the legislature played some role in that to help you, but, and then I also look at the Port Authority, which is really just ready to really take off, and so Lincoln County, North Platte are really on the move, and it's because of great leadership now locally that really continues to move us forward. So, thank you for the service. Thank all of you for your service.
Thank you, Senator.
Let me say it, you get a wooden plaque at fifty, so just. But there probably will be a legislative resolution introduced in the next legislative.
Certificate of recognition. Thank you very, very much, Senator. Very, very much appreciate it.
Joe, you might have to add another wall at your office. I started things off. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything?
I'd like to say a word.
Very good, George.
I came up here from Dawson County in two thousand.
And you are?
George Lobby from North Platte. And I came in, this is one of the first assignments I had as a newspaper reporter, was to cover this board, and I was totally impressed with how accessible it was, how efficient it was, with three commissioners at that time, and they got a lot done, and they were open about stuff. I could talk to anybody about any questions and answer. Joe always answered my phone calls. Also, I kind of seem to have a conservative leaning towards government, which I really appreciated. I thought the county operated very efficiently, and with a lot of heartfelt, good public servants, and, you know, I could talk about Becky, I could talk about the Sheriff's Office, I talked about a lot of people in this room, but there was a culture here that was real respectable, and Joe was the figurehead, and I think the inspiration for a lot of it, and matter of fact, and, and did business in, in the right way, and didn't mind fighting for what you thought was right, and so I appreciate that, and congratulations on forty years.
Thank you, George. Very much.
Joe, I started things. I guess I'll end things unless my colleagues have something they'd like to say.
I would, I would like to say, Joe, you and I, we have moments where we butt heads. That's expected, but I'll tell you that, you know, from a very early age, you've taught me a lot, and you've taught me much, much more while serving in this capacity that I'm eternally grateful for. You've made me a better commissioner, a better public servant.
Thank you, Chris, very much. And I would like, I'd echo that, those comments. We have a relationship that started a long time ago on a professional basis, but in twenty eighteen, when the voters of Lincoln County decided they wanted five commissioners instead of three, you came to me and asked me to applaud. Thank you.
For me, Joe, this was a pleasure to put together. I'd like to thank Tammy, Becky, Julie, everybody that helped me with this. I had people in the governor's office communicating back and forth. People appreciate and recognize the long time service. I think we can all agree, being a public servant isn't always easy, but it is very rewarding, and for me personally, you've And for me personally, you've been a person in this room that, even though you're not always politically correct, it's usually exactly what I need to hear. Doesn't mean I always like it at the time. But I appreciate the mentorship, the historic value that you bring here. I am always in awe when we are discussing things that we only address occasionally, that you can speak to the history of why something is happening the way it happens.
I'm a little surprised they can remember it.
That's why I'm so impressed. I don't have that kind of recall always. So, I just want you to know that I appreciate you. We have a lot of contact, usually on the phone during the day when you're traveling to other places. And you give me a lot of good guidance. And I do know that we are better because of you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I shake some hands?
Oh, well, with Tyler's permission, would it be okay if we excused Joe from signing the rest of the claims and us three take care of that? Then we, as soon as the last claim is signed, we will need you to come back so I can adjourn the meeting. And then Tammy and Julie and Becky and the other employees at the courthouse have put together a little reception for you. Out in the hallway, we have cookies and coffee and other liquid refreshments. I would like people to stick around and mingle a little bit, have an opportunity to talk to Joe. And I'd really like to get a group picture with everybody that took the time.
Let's go close claims tonight.
Okay, there you go. If you all have time to hang out for that, that would be awesome. You're welcome, Joe. Tyler, is that, that's okay?
We have.
Fine, but he's been part of it.
Hi, Penny.
Well, he hesitated when he came in. We didn't have anything set up in the hallway. They did all that after he came in. Good to see you.
Hey, Todd. How are you? We'll make it.
Thanks for being here, Phil. Thanks for coming.
Hang on, you're not getting off that busy.
You're just going to be out in the hallway, right?
Yes, absolutely. Hello, how are you, sir?
Great. How are you?
Good. Can I give you a hand, man?
If I can make it that far.
Actually, yeah, she's.
She's a good girl.
She's good. She's, she's, she said she was physically. No, I don't know. It'll be different for her. I need a, you know, she's sixty-something.
It'll be, this next section will be quite challenging. We're probably going to flip the script. They were trying to bill us taxes for the people that were going to raise your taxes.
I didn't know she told you.
I think we're going to flip the script and make them be suspended because they're all wanting to come back now. Reinvest, you know, don't do that in SNAP, don't do that in this.
Yeah.
Honey Burger? Hey, all those fellows have dropped their extra baggage. And it's. But no, they've, they've been eating pretty good. Enjoying life.
She's kind of interesting because there's a few people that accuse me that, well, you got, you've got lobbyists in the legislature that's got the inside traffic. I don't think you, you won't ask her about the inside. I think she's in the outside.
She works her damn head.
She's always lobbying. I keep telling her. She's very persistent. I was telling her that she needs to get better. So, she's got, she's got to pay for health money. And of course, the problem is Nebraska's behavioral health reimbursement rate is tripled next time. DHHS, they know the last year decided to try to save some tax. That itself is going to save a lot of money. Brian Hart's done a nice job really chairing DHHS. And he's, but I would say Steve Corsey was a remarkable hire. It's the first year that DHHS has had a concerted effort in the department. And we've had these liberal people who are the only people who want to do a standard. I mean, we're going to be responsible for the record. But I will tell you, a good example is like with schools. We decided that if you had eighty-five percent of your reimbursement, it's a forty percent of your reimbursement. As soon as we did that, they gave us forty-eight, five, so it's a double, no, more than five root because the number of.
We have finished signing all of the claims. If nobody has anything else for the good of the county?